You want to make it be live now?
No. But if you don't, you can if you want, but you're not here to.
I won't even like hit your screen.
That's just the. Oh, well, they are always seeing back in my business with the C H A. C H A, they came in. Thousand dollars lower than eighty or. I think Marty sent me down.
So he was decided. He was decided.
Yeah, yeah, they are unanimously. So C H R.
So no action needed from this group?
We need to approve it. We need to approve it.
It was just based on the money or?
They they thought they were both.
They're both comparable.
Comparable, just the the amount. Clearly.
What is the amount?
But also so that they felt really good about the interview and the feedback that they gave.
Well, wasn't it E D R that noticed the Whitlam problem?
Yeah.
Called for the.
Well, they had Marty wrote that the C H A. The experience with field and sport design costs streamlined in-house staff and the references. E D R's references didn't. Get back to anybody. So they also came in like a thing of like forty eight thousand versus twenty eight or forty nine, twenty nine. So it was considerably different. What might be, they were. Little bit apart, really far apart.
The sensation when I did the one up in Portland.
I don't know. I couldn't make any of these.
C H A just got the sports complex.
Yeah. I think that'll be good.
So, yeah, that's what Marty said. The man, Cassie.
So. It did a little. One quarter.
But it's time line for the report there, the timeline, uh, for the C H A.
Yeah.
Oh, I don't know what the timeline is for.
Until November.
Yeah, I don't know if I probably had it on. If I would put in the budget. You know, the. I was in like thirty and you take a little bit of.
So we're gonna be ending a fourteen forty. Point four, depending, we have it currently at twenty thousand, we're gonna increase it to thirty.
Yeah. A.
Forty, it's on page two.
All right, so I'm moving separate from the recommendation to our Y C.
From how much?
Three. Oh, second.
Yeah. Um, Leo, Boris Mendes.
Uh, yes.
Yes, yes.
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 So the the fifty thousand for the housing, uh, housing fund. The don't it's not the housing fund that we usually do.
Yeah, when there's a project is when we we do the.
Okay, so you don't, we don't put it in the budget upfront.
No, we haven't done that. But when they have a project that they say they need it, then we just. We keep funding it then.
Comes out of fund balance.
Yes. There's there's not, there's nothing. Coming up right now, other than the. I H S.
Yeah, because you already done.
Yeah.
Be nice if something didn't look.
Yeah. Still a little. Yes, we can start at the first page with, is there anything anyone? That's what I'm looking at up there. So I don't know. The other ones have the same. Man, if there's anything that you wanted to talk about, I'll just bring it up.
Like the whole page, even page at a time or section.
Yeah, it resonates to the. Age, if you had notes about stuff.
Why? I really like the recommendation for. The court clerks.
So do we want to put all payroll together then? So it's all the basically all the contractual equipment. So we'll do all of the.
We'll do all the personnel stuff.
The one thing that's not really payroll, but kind of is, but not, is the court security. Eleven ten four one oh five.
Yeah.
They increased that to six thousand and they never even use thirty thousand. So I'm just pass the board if they wanted to.
Yeah, bring it back on thirty.
Yeah.
Did they give a reason? They didn't give us a reason for increasing it. They said it's.
So I think that that is recent.
They were doing it because of their increased parking tickets they're gonna have to take over from.
No, 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 the security is the effect of bailiff.
Right, I just thought he was taking a guess they were gonna have more.
About a little bit more, but free, but I mean.
But not, but not that much.
It's not much.
They're not gonna increase the number of nights in the court.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's not as.
And they're not even using that much.
Not that much difference in talent.
You just got a question, um, for the line of the town board line. I thought we were using two point five. And, uh, you know, the, I'm not suggesting that we have it simply, I have a question. You know, and for us is for the town board, I would be sorry. It's not even three percent.
Yeah, it is three percent.
Yeah. It's like three.
For sound work on.
Two ninety nine subsequently.
What's our control? That's basically, like, if you go to.
Alright, so we we agree, we're gonna go in three point four C P I.
Yeah, we're, let's go back to payroll. And we'll do all of that at one time when we go into executive session. So we'll come back to that, those those specifics later.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
But so let's go, I mean, Jason. I was saying, let's keep going on point, any other changes to point fours, point twos. For you here.
I'm confused by what you're saying.
So all, all the personnel can be into executive session because we're talking about specific.
Okay, so you mean to say.
Yeah, so it's hard, it's hard because there is very much.
I mean, most of the first page here is. Personnel. The only thing I wanted to. Your own security.
Security is, but we're not talking about specific.
Pretty.
Individuals, so because it's all long.
Yeah, they just.
Yeah, the only other thing I don't get that went up, it's not people is the audit, but we already talked about that, so.
Yeah. Next second. That's where we are. The one we could probably. I just really don't know where it'll go, but legal. I've kept it thirty, but. I don't know how, I mean, there must have been stuff this fall on education. Or the crypto guy, the cloud sending, new Z M Z N. Yeah.
It's right there, eight thousand two fifty one. Oh, that's right. Oh, no, sorry, sorry, ten thousand, I was off the line.
So that's one, I mean. You could. Take from.
So you have to up it a little?
No, reduce it because we haven't been using thirty grand.
Yeah.
Yeah, and we need to. One thing too, it's like money interesting.
With fourteen thirty dot one.
That is when we have vacation buyouts, health insurance buyouts. Retired, somebody leaves and then.
Sure.
Yeah, even though we didn't use all in twenty three. There's good possibility that we'll use most of that in twenty five.
Okay.
How much we use in twenty four?
Uh, it won't go out till December. So it's kind of hard to tell, but I I suspect we'll use at least that much, or probably use at least sixteen thousand. I don't think it'll go over, but. That's kind of prediction. Jason, I'm not sure where this is gonna go, but Sammy sent that email yesterday to. You and I about. A grant, uh, money for a grant writer in.
Oh, right.
For the.
So, yeah. Um, it's a state, it's gonna have this program.
There's a grant program, or there is a grant program, so. I don't have, I don't, I'm not really sure what account code to put it in right now.
Um, do we still have that research one?
I tried to look one up on Conflor's website. I didn't find anything specific. Um, but it might just fill up under general governmental support. Which is on page four, something ahead, sorry. We could make a code in there for grant writing.
Yeah. Yeah.
So the question is, how much? I mean, I was kind of guessing like five thousand because it's, we're discussing for grant writing at this point.
Yeah, but that wouldn't be cheap.
That would be cheap.
Oh, yeah.
Are they writing it or are they following it through all the way as a project manager?
No, you don't write it. I don't know. We're used to those.
Do a grant?
Some of them, no, no, no. Depending on they're not writing, I assume, you know, for years it was a big over ties or something.
I think it depends on the grant, probably two, it's my guess. Do five and then add or start at ten? Obviously, it'd be thirty, so.
Oh, if you do five and it goes over, we can just get the money somewhere else, right?
Yeah.
From like.
Like the contingency or something.
Alright, so do you wanna say five?
Sure.
Yeah.
So it'll be somewhere around the nineteen nineties. I just don't, I gotta make a code for it.
The warranty, I will check out for grant writing services. Yeah, it's not a lot of regression, I mean, the branding.
I saw something.
On page.
That was, yeah, that was. So is there anything on page three?
So where does that grant go, the five grand?
One general.
I think I'm gonna put that, I think we'll make one under a nineteen ninety, nineteen something.
Okay.
Because that's general government support, government supports.
Back to page three.
Yeah.
Pretty much by where.
I'm amazed how much you dropped, though.
It's ready. Not central storm equipment moving twenty K to zeros because it was balanced out somewhere else.
Um, that was, we budgeted last year for the new copier, scanner, printer. And also the new phones. And the new phones, the finishing payment will happen in December, that one. I'm out right in December.
Website, that's gonna be twenty five thousand a year, just to me, because I know that works.
I didn't think to ask Cassie that directly.
Yeah, she's, yeah.
Yeah, Cassie, do you know what the website? Cost will be. I guess next year. Or Lauren, do you know what that is? I don't know what it is.
Yeah, Jason, give me a second. I'll go into my notes and look it up.
When there was, there, I don't know if it was significant enough to capture here, but there was a jump when we. Put all the. We're giving hosted email addresses.
Yeah, for everybody, that's gonna fall under the service contracts because it falls under plan first invoice.
Okay, so even with that, that line went down.
Yeah, I think we just had, I don't know if we have over budgeted a little bit for that, just to have enough there.
Okay.
The equipment line and that I T. There's no known changes with the server or we did a firewall this year. Um, but there's possibilities of doing a large media room some. More updated.
Yeah.
Personal meetings.
Yeah.
It went down from. Thirty. Probably. Almost thirty K.
What line are you looking at?
The I T, the whole.
Yeah, drop the service contracts cost. And the website, yeah.
So the one thing that, um. We, I have an account code that I'd like to make for thirty three ten. Um. I'd like to ask the town board if they do want to put in. For. Basically, we'd like to, I was gonna suggest the town board that they apply for a local government. Grant through New York State, it's called Craig Grant, C R E G. Um, to do a study. For. Moving the fire departments to a district. It is a fifty fifty. Grant match. And this is a study to start with. If the town decides to implement the study. It becomes a ninety ten match for implementation and study. So by putting in some money this year, we can get the study done and then the town board can make further decisions on how they wanna go forward. Um, it has been done before, town according and the village according. Uh, worked together to get that grant. And did that with their fire departments and moved them to it, and they all went to a district. Um, so it would be a new account code. And something that wasn't included in this preliminary budget, because it was something that Chris found and. Got some research on, so that could be a possibility. Um, so asking if. We can add a twenty five thousand. Because it's a fifty thousand dollar max, I believe, for the grants.
Yes.
So. At most, uh, it would be, but we don't even expect it would be that much, but it's just a matter of if the town. Study part would be fifty fifty. It's then a matter of implementation later.
So the state grant program requires a local match. It's a fifty fifty match. And the cost of the study could be up to a hundred thousand?
No, it could be up to fifty thousand. I mean, but I, it, most of them, I think, would have less than that because this is just the study part. If we went to the, if. If the study proves or shows to be beneficial and the town board wants to move forward. It becomes, then you can also use that same grant for implementation. Um, but it becomes a ninety ten match. Ten percent local share.
Part of like the local government efficiency.
Yes, that's what, yeah, I can remember what they meant.
Yeah, this was a big priority of the state to reduce that, you know, redundancies and. Economies, achieve economies of scale and local governments, so you're not, um.
Can we have a one? You've got the other. The other one, we're gonna add a grant writer, can we?
Well, because that's for grant writing.
Okay, so we can't merge those two.
Yeah. Yes, yes. Yeah, I prefer to keep them separate.
Alright, wait for the state to make sure the local government's serious.
I get it.
Oh, yeah.
So you went out and I.
So there would be an additional line in the thirty three ten point four oh one or something for twenty five thousand.
Twenty five thousand.
Yeah. And obviously, we have to go through the application process. Another big key is the villages have to. Honestly, sign on or approve or, so that'll be a big key, like a big, first we have to run over that, get over that hurdle that the villages agree. Do. I don't know what the word is. Honorable participate in the grant, um, because they are village departments. There's two of them that are village.
Yeah.
So we can only provide for contracts or services to. Non-city and non-village municipalities and towns. We can't run our own, but we can establish. An independent fire district.
Joint fire district. You sure? The villages will be joining, yeah.
If we went to a district.
The villages have to can.
They have to.
They have to agree to do it.
But it still would be within that framework of independent as opposed to a fire district, which we currently know.
Well, no, if the villages got into it, then it would be. Thing that incorporates the village as well.
Right, so they're all like officials.
Right, yeah, but that's why they're called independent, because they have their own commission. They're not part of municipal government anymore.
Yeah.
So that's part of the name.
Okay.
And the big difference.
To become their own taxing authority, they have their own board of commissioners, they have, they basically.
It's like a school board. Yeah.
So if they wanna raise their taxes more than, say, two percent, they have to override.
They have to override, just like everybody else. But they actually have to go to vote. Then they have to send it to vote, you know, override that two percent, not, not just us that can pass a local law.
Right.
They have to send it out to the voters to approve. So. Anyways, I'm asking if. I I'm willing to head that up, my grant application up. Uh, if I can get yours, the board support to help out with village connections because I don't have those directions.
Yeah.
In the meantime, we just.
Yeah, Cassie about it.
Yeah, we are at Cassie.
Yeah.
Back to the webs, yeah, back to the website, our initial term. Is six thousand one seventy, and we already paid that. So then, our recurring term. Will be five thousand one seventy, and we will owe that in twenty twenty five.
So we don't need twenty five thousand a lot.
No, we can move more of that to the. Want to get one of those for the. Of course, for the big rooms, we're not having. To like divert every week.
So do you wanna just?
The last couple of months have been, it's not been working.
So do you want to change the website to like eight thousand to make sure we have some enough?
Yeah.
There's extra pieces, and then do you want to increase the I T equipment?
By like five or. I think when Kathy did estimate, it's just a couple of years, you know, but I don't really, I don't think it changed much.
It was like fifteen thousand.
It's like fifteen, and I don't. Yeah, I don't think the number will change a whole lot from there.
So we. The other one plus five, so.
Yes, and just increase the A sixteen eighty point six five five, but reduce the. Sixteen eighty four oh two down to eight thousand.
And could this help us address our? Audio problems? And.
Yeah.
The meeting room.
Yeah.
Because this is like. Last night I couldn't hear, um, you know, I was forced to attend the planning board. On Zoom and the board members were trying to speak, you know, it's just a bubble. Were you on?
Yeah, same time. So it wasn't just us.
Yeah.
So they saw something would be up.
Well, no, the eight thousands for the website.
The website, okay.
Yeah, fifteen, we added five to the requirement one, so that.
Fifteen thousand.
Fifteen thousand, I think that'll be close.
Not to sound negative, but should we go ahead and leave ten in just this first year because since it's a new website coming out, there might need to be. More tweaking than. With the new website coming out, just leave the extra two in and. Don't think so?
Okay, we added as we need it.
Alright, yeah, I think, I think these, they, they kind of give us, Cassie, don't they give us a quote? And that's pretty much, they take care of it, us. The quote that we signed is all inclusive of anything that we need.
Awesome.
Are we gonna do that after I had a study? Like the one that's why we do it for all.
I have a different impression of the pepper I was studying than you.
Yeah.
The one that Mike Wilber.
Yeah.
Came up. Yeah.
It was very good.
I didn't think much of it.
I disagree. You know.
I thought the war stories were totally inappropriate and there was no actual planning provided. How you can actually do this.
Well, that's what they pay for. They got what they pay for. That was their scope of.
Right, because it was something he does for municipalities and he's done it for a bunch, and he brought his show to Edvarna. And it's basically a Christmas list.
He gave him what they last part. He had the scope of work. I mean, he does other stuff too, like he would. With finance stuff, but they didn't ask for that. They just asked for what they got.
But we'd have to, I, you know, have a different scope of work than for.
Yeah.
In my opinion, to invest in that sort of thing.
Wonder if that's part of the fire district, at least anyway, because. Financing is one of the reasons why you do something.
Right, I mean, I wouldn't. Paying for a study and. Doing the other match with the state program scene. In conflict.
Yeah. So, yeah, we we have, we've made the corrections for the dog control stuff, so we have the county lease next year is the last year of the. On of the lease, so they'll, we won't have a. Increase until the following year unless we end up building our own. Um, the R F P's been. Um, amended. So. Because we're gonna put it out Monday.
Yeah, I'm gonna check with Cassie.
So you're thinking to extend the contract for the year?
Well, no, the the kennel lease, we got a four-year contract, so next year is year four.
Okay.
So we already, we're already set for the year. It's just year, the following year, we gotta sort the kennel situation.
We're locked in with.
We're locked in, so we got for one more year.
Right.
They are, I mean, leaving the, you know. Number for D C O, the same. Six seventy five because. That's, we already thinks that's probably. Maybe. But I don't know, it's gonna come back with this R F P. So. Page five. Highway. Street lighting as the. That's really electric.
For economic assistance opportunities, I don't know. For economic assistance opportunities, I wonder if we would add. A contract or provide or we're gonna add a line in to support um.
Life forms. I don't know how much you want to put in. They didn't really have an ad, I mean.
It would give you what thirty six hundred back.
No, it's twenty twelve, it was thirty six hundred.
Yeah, I think six thousand would be good.
It's that's in between. I think that's again gives nine.
Yeah.
Let me see, this is the.
That was the one I did the presentation last week. You know, I'm seeing your center, like just keep the load classes. They do a lot of work out here in Dryden. You know, other person. Helping people to do the taxes, to classes, to travel.
Oh, they weren't the, oh, yes, yes. Where is that?
Out of the budget for a long.
Put it under with.
What's the number? We're looking at.
Yeah, six.
Kristina's proposing six. Ulysses. What's in about four, it's fifty nine. We had. Think two. Twelve. We have about the same percentage of people using those.
Yeah.
They who though we should have.
I mean, we had done this back in like ten years ago.
Yeah.
Yeah, eleven percent.
Contract. Um, that basically all the stuff she described in the presentations.
Yeah.
In the contract statement, it's the only way we can do this. There has to be a. So contract with a report.
Trying to remember what we gave them previously.
That was thirty six hundred.
Yeah, the stats are that you can see. Fifteen percent of um the people are using the health screening and counseling assistance come from Dryden, ten percent. Of the tax preparation comes from Dryden and. Um, eleven percent of their. People uh participating in their classes come from Dryden. I don't think I captured the percentage doing the travel.
And so six thousand is maybe what this is.
So the town of it gives them eight.
Eight.
Yeah, and then Ulysses gives them four, so we'd be in the better.
I mean, there is no. Town of it goes. Twenty thousand people. Or fourteen. Fourteen. So we should give two thirds of town.
Yes. So well, success.
Okay.
Right.
There's some funny math.
Looking track of how much we went down or up. So far, we're only up two K.
Okay.
What was on the sheet?
A hundred, it's still gonna be the hundred put in.
Well, yeah, that's in the A.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're. Actually down thirty seven thousand. Oh, that's gonna be, don't have a comp plan adjustment. So much for my math. No, you're right. You're, what'd you have eight? How much you had first? What was your number?
I'm now up two.
Up two because down twenty, down six, down three, down twenty nine, but then up twenty five.
That rail trail. Does seventy one, ten dot one and zero, is that because that was something that? It's just used for temporary.
Yes, okay. Um, that is used. I never when they did work, when they were, when the they do work for the E P F grants.
Okay.
Because if they do any work on the rail trail, it's not for E P F, it's just maintenance is D P W.
Is there gonna be any added expenses? This year trying to pursue this section that we don't have yet?
That's a great question. Um, so they, and we do have the maintenance line in there for ground meters. Um, if there is, usually they are trying to get grants for it um for a majority of it.
And one one thing that that will benefit the rail trail, it's not very expensive, it's the design connect. Program, we need five hundred bucks for that. And. Um.
Do you wanna put in?
Uh, where my team last year, when we paid for the design connect study.
I'm tapping my head, so.
It's not very much money, so. Other stuff that the rail trail will be doing. Well, if we'll be at the point of.
The village will free them, give us our. We're still on N P S.
We we have to wait till they meet. The trustees have to approve it on the fifth.
Alright.
That's something.
Page six.
Not to ask, sorry, that's it. Never mind. Sorry, I was wondering where that was.
Did the? Seventy five, ten, one and four just.
Uh, which, yes.
Okay.
Yeah. He's now an employee.
So like all these amounts, they already submit, is that what we got these numbers from, or is that just what we gave them? They already submit their contracts?
No, the contracts happen after.
So we just have the previous years?
Yeah, or adjust, if there's some that come back and say.
Okay.
Here's something, you know, here's what we're doing next year or something, right? We get letters for.
Yeah.
Like the library and historical society.
That's what they're asking for. I mean, we can, Marty, the music, the band music. That comes from Marty.
And sometimes she has grants that cover.
Yeah.
Fortunes of certain.
American Legion or V F W that's. For the stuff to do better in the stadium.
So the municipal grants, what what is again?
Which one? Oh, that, the seventy nine eighty nine line?
Yeah.
That is um the recreation grants for usually um. For kids to go to camp. It's a basically funding for. Other kids for uh recreation.
Hmm, okay. And we don't know how much they spent last year.
Uh, look, she might not have just given me the number to make the adjustment out, but um. I can't remember how. I'd have to go back and find its history on twenty three and twenty two, but.
Okay, because twenty two and twenty three is. So there was.
I think she, didn't she talk about when they bought? When they started, I think they provide things like helmets and stuff with the book on, but that.
That actually involves usually under um equipments, no, not equipment. Uh, shit, where is she?
But it's expensive, so.
Yeah.
There's more need to help.
Yes.
I guess. Oh, that's in like seventy seven, seventy three thirty, if we should contact. When she needs to buy equipment for sports.
Where is that?
Uh, seventy six, it's seventy three thirty. That just, yeah, lots of. Mostly anything that she needs for her recreation program. Other than summer camp.
It's the watershed monitoring, is that that same site?
It's a couple others.
So going down to um, this is the rail trail bridge money. Just put in two hundred thousand last year, is that? Does that roll over?
Um, actually, we're gonna need to put that in. Uh, thank you. Uh, put that in again this year. Um. But we've always used fund balance, she's on that.
So that pays them?
It's page nine. So, so it won't make any difference in the tax levy, but we'll. We'll use fund balance for that, so we're not using tax levy dollars for it. Cross that bridge and we'll get to it. Hope the bridge is gonna go somewhere.
It's ever built.
Is that the bridge?
Yeah, you get them? It's not, we've got a grant. Really hope so. Pile on my desk, really need that to move. Tell me when you get to me.
It's great. Well, that value add. Friends benefits.
Page thirteen. Most of the stuff we're gonna talk about was just personal stuff anyway, there. I don't think we fly like.
Changes in.
Seventeen is their D A. Not gonna snow this year.
Snow extra.
So the farmers all might accept.
I heard warmer and wetter, which could mean no snow or extra snow. Or just ice. We're gonna shoot.
No, no, yes, there's no.
My money is on warmer but snowier.
So we can zero out the salt, but it.
Yeah. I thought we have a weather control machine now. It sends, though, was it just a hurricane machine?
I just want to watch it a little fuzzy kind of color.
Hurricanes.
Maybe insurance. A hurricane. We were at. Not having insurance for it's.
Stay home, covered for.
Yeah. Or or our municipal waters, municipal water system or anything like that.
Okay, we probably, if it is that extreme, we'd end up with FEMA.
Coming in.
Yeah.
They certainly do.
Yeah, so I most like, I would guess. You know, when you have other major acts, it's usually FEMA. Pointing the theme here.
Yeah, but they usually can only over a certain dollar amount, so I didn't know. Okay. Sorry.
Right, that's cool. Good questions.
So the other thing we talked about that we need to add to the A is a hundred thousand for the local share of the screen thing stabilization grant.
Where is that?
That'll be on page eighteen. Uh, inter fund transfer capital projects fund. So the local share will be to be accounted for in D A. A hundred thousand because there's a. Our budget, the budget has a four hundred and ten thousand some contractor that needs to go out to bid. By early, well. Late winter, early spring.
That's nineteen nine, nineteen ninety fifty or nineteen ninety?
Ninety nine fifty.
I understand. So that's. But we got seven hundred.
Yeah. I think I told you, like nine hundred, that was a twenty five percent local shares.
Our strangers.
At least one more spot. So we do have a hurricane.
All that pork going down. You can't hear that term anymore. Yeah, like federal budget used to be all about pork in the nineties and I don't even hear that word anymore.
Yeah, because we had two thousand eight.
We used to care about that since too.
And you can print your own manual.
Copy machine.
Alright, my copy machine for where?
No, no. Not in the budget.
The copy machine slash snow pile. Altus equipment. Alright, so then. I guess D B is where we're at next.
That's pretty much it's all three nations.
I guess your chips amount.
Yeah. Pick your gas.
Deep hole here, D B, your snow, your winter recovery goes in the.
Personal. So much in two years.
Yes.
That's the new contract.
Yes. The new contract, second twenty three. Three point four. So twenty three was one of the big.
And they go.
Yeah.
What they wanted.
Didn't get all they wanted, so.
Yes. You should be happy then. Believe they're happy. They have to leave.
We want to look at backfobbing down for those four, or do you want to continue? Okay, so. Using all of those changes and what's currently in the budget, it brings us up to. Jason, can you bring up that spreadsheet? I sent it to you the other day, could you get this updated? So I just do, it's not writing numbers off. Yeah, the top has, so. Um.
In your market.
Yeah.
Some of us, we have issues.
Some of us, we have issues.
So this is the history of tax rate and tax levy. We've been using that spreadsheet for a few years. You know, one of the things Jason said in the beginning is trying to keep the tax levy increase to only four to four and a half percent. So you can see that in the far right there, the levy increase, four point four six, but that actually takes the tax rate down by 12%. So that our tax levy will be 7,397 and change. And that's because the assessment was a large change due to reassessments of the properties in the town. So by using this, it's saying that ADB, ABDADB would need to be no more than the seven million. With all the changes that we have right now, the total for ABDADB. Keep, no, keep going down another little bit more. So, it's pretty close. This is before we just made all these changes, this was just my notes to start with, so if you go over just a little bit, Jason, to the next couple rows, columns over. You see total of ADA, it's eight million seven oh nine would be the actual, what we have budgeted.
So change.
So take that, it's now eight million sixty-eight, three seventy-three. Cause I've made notes of all the changes we just added.
Eight zero six eight zero seven three.
Uh, three seven three. Yep, so there's basically, and the potential tax levy at this point is seven million three ninety-seven, two fifty-one. So right now, we have budgeted six seventy-one over.
Good.
So this, um, we have a very healthy fund balance. Especially DB, one of the things I looked at is DB has a very healthy, a large, large fund balance, like over a million. But the thing is, DB can only use it for street maintenance. Um, so it doesn't make sense to hold a lot of money in DB because it can only be for.
Streets.
So the thought, the, one thought is we use fund balance to make up this difference with maybe three to 400,000 coming out of DB. A little bit come out of DA, some kind of A, and some kind of B, and we split it between all of the four funds.
What are the other fund balances?
I did not open up my sheet, so let me go get that. And I'm gonna, I have estimates basically based on what we think could happen the rest of this year, which is, you know, kind of a, not totally sure yet, it hasn't finished, basically, so it's harder to, but at least from what we budgeted, I can give you what, what it is. So the A fund estimated 2024 is 2,092,000. I'm gonna give round numbers, so you don't have to deal with a lot of numbers. Uh, the B fund has 315,600. The DA fund is estimated to have 1,911. And the DB fund has 1,264. Again, estimates. DB is 1,264.
Run it through this moment.
Yep, A is 2,092,000. DB, uh, B is 315,600. DA, 1.911, 1,911,000. And then DB.
One million nine hundred eleven.
DB, 1,264,000. Uh, and one of the keys, we don't, fund balance is great to have, but we also, it looks suspect when you have too much. Yeah, they don't like it, they prefer we have a policy. Sometimes, but not today. So.
Only thing is if fund balance lets us get that interest though.
Well, it does, but that's, right now, we're using, at least it's benefiting us in that way, so we're definitely using it.
If, but for instance, using 200,000 for the bridge might be a good use by the contractor standards, so that would come out of the A fund.
Yes, so basically, we know there's gonna be 200,000 out of the A fund that we're gonna use. Um, one note that, if, Jason, can you just go to the left a little bit? I didn't, should have mentioned this during our discussions. Uh, there's a forty, you see the adjustment for comp plan of 45,000. That is merely because the comp plan was budgeted for 50,000, and we've only spent 3,000, and that's in your, it's eighty twenty, it's on page seven of the budget. Um, so my suggestion is, is we won't be taxing again for that again this year, so that would be 45,000 out of the fund balance, cause what we budgeted for this year is just gonna roll into fund balance. So we know 240,000 for sure is gonna come out of A, but we can definitely pull some more out of A for remaining extra costs. And then, as I said, DB could have a good chunk of money taken out of it, and still be very healthy. We still could pull some from DA.
And if we needed, say, this came with the planning board last night, to pay a consultant to make revisions to our zone, and based on what the current consultant is wrapping up. What if that costs $40,000?
Would that fall under the comp plan, or would that fall under?
It's implementing comp.
Okay, so, so in 2025, we'll still have 50,000 budgeted for the comp plan, so it'll be there.
By that, we mean zoning updates.
Yeah. Yeah, so we're still budgeting for the comp plan, I'm just saying we're not gonna tax again for the comp, for that amount, basically what I'm suggesting.
So that would be then, forty-five.
Two forty-five for sure out of the A fund, but again, we could increase that, I would probably say we should increase that some. And then also additionally, then break it out between the other funds, as both, or it sees fit.
So even taking a 200, great budget, so we're, then we're over, still overbidding.
No, because see, that two forty-five isn't included in that six seventy-one already.
Oh.
Because, because it wasn't included when we did the first. That's where it gets fun.
If we had an additional expense like the, we started work on the rec fields, we could take that out of A fund as well.
It could, we, we have rec reserve, as the EPF grant's gonna go through, we'll have more money coming back in.
Right.
Um, that's, that's what's holding out that EPF grant refund or re-reverses, it's those expense. Um, anyway, so we'll have.
Just make a, have a resolution, just pay for that.
Well, I think once you get the plan, that could get, I mean, that's up to the board and the ORC, on how I'd use it, so. But yes, that's, be available, I mean, I'm not saying, obviously, we're not gonna use up all of our fund balance just in one year, if they can't, that would be a very bad idea.
Things that could come up.
Yes, there are things that could come up and validate having it.
But so, we're talking about 400 out of DB, two forty-five out of A, and then we just need another.
Well, you can't count the two forty-five out of A because that's not included in that six seventy-one, remember the 200 is not in this tentative budget. So it'd be two forty-five plus something. Maybe we can do a percentage or bigger if you want, it is kind of a.
DA has those. DA and A. These could be, we can't, that's mostly the salary.
Yeah. They might not wanna do. So if you didn't do DA, you could do DA.
I thought we talked about using B, B, or the streets.
Well, yeah, we, we have another 400,000 over that.
400 from the.
Yeah, so then you're left with two seventy-one uh, left, that would need to be out of fund balance.
Right, well, we already have forty-five of that, A at least.
Well, we know two forty, well, you gotta remember, it's two, two forty-five is definitely A, but we also need to still cover two seventy-one.
Aren't we getting ahead of ourselves if we haven't done the rest of the budgeting, like personnel?
I think those are gonna be minor changes.
Yeah, the total dollar amount, that's not gonna be huge.
Yeah, I think we can come back to it, i-if we wanna go back and really, if something is a problem, we can come back and adjust, but at least this is the starting point while we have these four, and then we can, if that's what you guys wanna do.
But, but for A, right now, we know we gotta not include that 200, which is, which is 45,000 because of what we, yeah, so, so we're at two twenty-six, then not worried about the 200.
Right, right, we are in, it's.
That's just separate.
Yeah.
Then DA. We can take more out of A.
Might be easiest just to give DB, DA a flat number, and then A is, we, everything else.
Well, I'm, so for B, though, if that's all primarily that department we fund every year by salary, it's not, unless they need equipment or something.
Yeah, they don't, according to their budget, they don't need anything this year, that's.
And so there's nothing, like, what, what would fund balance potentially be, I mean, that's.
Yeah, I mean, that's only just the balance, that if you wanted to, we could push some of it to be, cause obviously their revenue. It's, it's not much, unless they happen to get some, um, a lead permits, like a big.
That's gonna be huge.
Yeah. Yeah.
Easily, without worrying about anything, it's fifty out of B.
Yeah, I think it'd be fine, it would be. You wanna do them remaining 176 out of DA?
Yeah.
Because that has a very helping balance, it has funny, even for, you know, had two trucks run down.
Yeah, we can still buy them.
Yeah, and he has reserve funds.
Yeah. That would still, before even dealing with the personnel stuff. Leave us a four point nine million, that's one down, because we're gonna need just four.
That's good.
It's great.
Upstairs, it fires, one truck stuck.
If you use a spreadsheet, you can actually able to view the numbers down the bottom, and have a calculation. Fiverr is a title project, so it does like, it's not funding the taxpayer dollars.
You wanna do them one by one?
Yeah.
Make it bigger.
Stuff in the bottom corner.
So this is basically just taking their budget numbers, and I just put it in to the spreadsheet, that's because this modified to the path, that's tentative, but it, we didn't have to with a contract, not really. Was Neptune's wrong?
Yeah, it doesn't look like. Six five, five ninety.
It's five ninety, five hundred.
Well, this is town contract, that's the number we, with their budget, they're twenty twenty-five, four fifty-six.
No, I did, I thought the wrong number, I did, I'm sorry, my mistake, so Jason, can you change that number to five ninety-eight, five hundred?
Where were you getting that?
I don't know.
No, I'm sorry, Jason.
Oh, cause it says on the, like, their, oh, that's very good strong.
Yes, I'm not, that one, alright, you got it.
It's five ninety-eight.
Yeah, yeah, the little tiny one. I must have been looking, I think it's the same schedule, I must have looked it. Yeah, I might have looked at the wrong, the wrong spreadsheet.
Chris, you have any idea whether they each step to the village to change that number, or what?
Whether Neptune?
Yeah.
I mean, their current contract in the village expires.
Okay, so that goes through and say a long enough. I guess what surprised me most about this is a 26% overall increase in their budget.
Man, I mean, we already had reporting, kind of four fifteen.
Uh, they had two requests.
Okay.
So I started with one, just to start with something.
Okay. I can see, like, the village, at least is trying, and they just give them a number, that's it. If they don't go over, like, well, do they need this truck?
So the 26%, man, you gotta think it's including the New York State grant, and it's also including, they put in for their New York class interest estimate.
The New York State.
It's a very tough line for 95,000. So it's, right, so when you look at, that's the, the grant, so they have the revenue, but they also show the.
Okay, I did.
So that points across time as a little, really, the big key is their interests, um, they've changed their interest and budget. They were thirty-one compared to the 50,000 they budgeted in 24.
And do you happen to have their increase, let's see, from twenty-three to twenty-four, it's right, they went to 20,000, that correct? In their request from us? So about the same, right?
Yeah.
This 95%. Their last big, and Chris, you did a good job with your spreadsheet, their last big increase was two thousand. Twenty, two thousand twenty one, and then it was four hundred thousand to five hundred and eighteen.
Right.
But then, to their credit, they've been. Less dramatic with their increases in the year. You have any further comments on their, things that we might not be losing? Why it should be.
Well, in general, I guess, you know, for all the departments, it might be. Wise to. See whether they're going in the right or the wrong direction. Terms of their capabilities, um. I, I mean, a, a very large percentage for all four of them is, is going to. Future apparatus purchases, and it's, even beyond the line that they put in for their, um. Every year, they, for twenty thousand here, ten thousand here, they almost never spend it all. And, you know, they just roll it into the apparatus replacement. So, um. You know, it's up to, up to you folks to figure out whether you think they're giving you enough bang for your buck. And whether they're headed in a positive or, you know, a not so positive direction.
Alright, so you're saying if they put in for repair, say, on a certain engine. And they don't use all that money, they use the balance.
Yes.
That goes into the reserves.
Yes, yeah, for, for everything, for everything, and sometimes they overspend. What they budgeted, but not very often, if you look at the, the, the budget request for years, I mean, that's, that's how they roll.
When they, Preville said that they had been under asking for years, and this is why it's coming ahead. I, did I miss here?
But their budget has increased, I mean, last year it went up. Probably fifty five or thirty percent, so I don't know if that's accurate.
I understand what you, what you said.
I remember that.
Well, they also got money outside the budget, probably once a year too, and then it went to. A vehicle.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, they, they, Preville made a fairly persuasive case to me anyway, that. They had fallen behind in terms of paying their actual costs, so that's why I recommended. Two years ago, that they get a ninety four thousand apparatus replacement on bond. And then, the, I mean, almost immediately, all that and more, they, they ordered new truck.
Yes, they're asking for.
Let me ask you this, I'm just brought to speaking, on, on the repair line. I know we're only in September, but you look at what they spent today, I'm thinking about Neptune right now.
Right.
And every account is a fraction of what they requested, except one.
Yeah, but then you said.
Yeah, let me finish, and then every one of those accounts asked for, well, almost all of them asked for increases. And do you think that's strategic to add more money to the reserves or is it whatever they?
I, I think they're hedging their bets, because if you get, uh, you know, a major pump repair. Or you need new brakes, um. Or, you know, you blow a jug on, on the engine, I mean, you, you, you could be talking twenty grand.
Yeah, I guess that's, I think. The political cost to them is very low, for us, we, we grant this and, and. They can pad, they can build in a lot more padding, because they're insulated from the tax base, like we are. We, you basically pass the budget, we may have to go explain it. And I think there's a built in, uh, incentive to overreach on some of these.
Well, it could be, I mean, you know, in their, in their defense, like I said. They're, they're setting themselves up, so if they do have a large unexpected. Repair, that's, that's needed, I mean, you know, you need new brakes, you need new brakes.
They also have a very large reserve.
Yeah, that's.
Very large, that's, that's my next comment is, I understand heading and trying to think ahead, but you can't always, but then it's why you have that. Backup reserves, which they all have a very healthy.
I, I don't know, historically, they have not dipped into that to do anything other than to buy new trucks.
True, but I just wish they would ask. In terms of, if, if, if it's money that needs to go into reserve to be listed as such, rather than under repairs. And to see, you look at twenty twenty three actuals, and you look at twenty twenty four actuals. They're all significantly lower than what was requested, with the, with one exception, it looks like.
Well, that's the.
No, I'm talking about twenty twenty three actuals.
Yeah, the twenty three actual, the twenty four budget. And then the twenty four actual by the end of September.
That's very true, and that's why I said that initially when we were talking, I am aware it's September. But I'm still looking at what the actuals were in twenty twenty three, and they weren't that much higher at the end of the year.
Yeah. They would just end up shifting stuff around to what they feel like they need to shift to twenty. I don't think the village gets into it the way we do, I really don't. I know, and what they do is they go, here's your number. Cuz that's what they should describe to us, the village just says, we're gonna give you this, and then they just let them allocate it. That's what they've always known, what we got here, and, and the micro analyze, the tires they're putting on their.
I don't think this is micro analyzing.
I'm just saying, like, we, if we don't want to. Like, if we wanna lower it, I said, just pick a number lower to, and they'll figure it out, that's all I'm saying. I need, and I'm fine doing that, just, they'll move stuff, or they need to move it within budget. As long as we're right, once I sign that check, we lost all control of that money anyway.
But we still have to have some sort of rationale behind that, I guess that's where I'm going, without. Actually looking at businesses, why do you know it, it makes us sound very ugly. You know, I think we have some sort of methodology in this. And that's why, you know, we have a fire coordinator who, who can shed some light on this, and then we make a judgment.
Even their parking lot, I thought that was done.
Which one are we talking about, Neptune?
That's study of strong.
I'm still on Neptune.
I'm in terminal, sorry, strong, sorry, sorry. Yeah, and part of the reality is, we don't have the money, that's part of the hell, you know.
Yeah.
So have you left thoughts on this, or where, where would you come in it?
That way, when I told them, which was. Right now.
Did you say that last week?
I wrote, wrote there.
Okay, you knew what you wrote before the contracts went in. Before these requests came to us.
Well, they came, they sent them with the budget notification, like, based on that letter, sent that with the budget template.
Okay, and then they responded with these numbers, okay, and, and your target is four point two.
I know the letters.
That's how raise of already.
With the numbers to say no.
I mean, if, if you wanted me to, I could go through this line by line and. Change a lot of things.
I know, but we just said we're not gonna do that, but we have to, we have to look, we came with broad strokes here.
Yeah, Jason told them four point two, and they. Right.
Cause it had a range of, Etna had a three percent increase. Reville had a twenty nine and a half percent increase. Uh, Neptune Hose had four point seven percent increase, and Varda's request. A basic request number one was a three point seven five percent increase. So they have that with the range, all of it, change the contracts, contract with each of the departments.
And you told them we were putting the ceiling at four point two? Yeah, four point two percent.
And when I had asked to do was maintenance of effort. Optional for. I mean, basically, the only department that listens, actually, what I wrote was Varna. It's providing two different budgets.
True, alright, and, and I came in.
So our big budget automatically with a four point two increase, about what's on here.
Well, basically, it's the maintenance of effort, is what I said to them, so. No, expect the budget proposed to town not succeed at four point two, I mean, pretty percentage, I wrote that specifically to Neptune.
Yeah.
We increased our.
Okay, so you didn't write that to every department?
I don't see it.
Not to. No, not that rate, but Neptune specifically, because the village issue is the village, like, never keeping up with us. Village drive.
I'm very, it's fun, not, it's fair.
Four point two is five ninety eight.
Um, so. There's four point seven, it's five ninety eight. Alright, well, let's.
So we're talking about a few hundreds. We're not talking about a huge pad or anything, so the difference is.
Okay, the only one that would be a huge difference is Preville, is Preville last year, twenty nine percent.
I imagine we have a studio.
Alright, so we're proposing lowering them half a percent. Basically.
If you're asking for four point nine.
Four point seven.
Did we do the math to verify that? Four point seven, okay.
And we're saying four point two.
And we grabbed it for.
And if Preville ever straightens out the safer grant mess, that. Little difference would be more than made up for. Reimbursement that certainly driving them yet for the year and recruiting, I mean, they're put in a line for recruiting, and that's. A hundred percent reimbursed by the safer grant.
So four point two will be five hundred ninety five thousand higher.
Yes. And they will find out. So you're gonna go home four point two then?
Oh, I mean, yeah, the one that requested last, that was like three percent.
Yeah, and now just that, and I mean, unless you're gonna get into other stuff. They stay well within.
But the other two departments, of course, you do.
Yes.
The basic.
We're doing Varna.
If you did four point two three times.
It will be four sixteen, eight hundred.
Yep.
Alright, I'm guessing, I'm not, I'm lying, we would do that if they didn't request that.
No, they had two budgets.
Yeah.
We, we are talking, you know, the very basic one is less than four point two and then four hundred.
Yeah, what was?
Word, okay.
So it's like, it's, it's slightly higher than the, the lowest one, but not nearly as much as the other one, the higher one.
Yes. So what's our center difference?
So this.
So the real budget was four point. So we, it come in a little higher than their lower budget, but much lower than their, their main, their main ask.
Yeah, I like, I like it the main ask, cuz they're all bunch of, they were the only ones that.
So what's the new amount? If you do four point two percent for Varna, it's four hundred and sixteen thousand eight.
So their four forty was.
Kind of very robust, extra.
Yeah, right, what was it, eighty, I guess that's like a ten percent increase.
Yes, it was ten percent.
Alright, I'm going there.
So, wow, so we get Preville also four point two percent, yes, if you do Preville at four point two percent, I came up with three hundred and twenty two thousand four ninety five.
Okay.
Is that, does anybody else wanna check that now? I'm not comfortable dipping. If we're already in, we're already in the red, we're dipping in the reserves for. They have a separate. Three, two, two. Did I get it wrong, or? Spring, the, the fund balance for the tire departments is separate from the four we were talking about earlier.
Right, no, I understood that, I just meant overall budget wise.
So this one, um, if, if you update Neptune to five ninety five, five oh three. And then you update Varna to five four sixteen eight hundred.
No, it's the four fifteen eight hundred.
No, four sixteen.
That would be four point two percent.
Yeah, and then, we need to double check Preville, just to make sure we're all the same. We hit the three oh.
So you say, isn't that the twenty twenty four budget is two hundred and thirty four thousand five hundred, right?
For which one are you talking?
For uh, preview.
It'd be three oh nine five hundred.
That was, oh shit, yeah, I had that one. I have the. Yeah, it's adopted and modified by.
Because that was the additional seventy five thousand that they. So the modified. You need to use the modified, but then add seventy five thousand to that.
So.
So if you go back, if you take for Freeville, go to their request, their worksheet that they gave us.
Yeah, so we still count seventy five, yes.
So it will be three hundred and fifty five.
The extra of Freeville last year was seventy five, it's like.
It did, so it knocked their funds down.
Yeah.
I think it included and it's really. Was part of their contract, ended up being part of their contract.
I, I got three twenty two.
Yeah, that's my count.
Four ninety nine.
Oh, four ninety nine, yeah. So Jason, if you're gonna change, reason all the three twenty two, four ninety twenty. No, four ninety nine, sorry.
Three twenty two, four.
I didn't know.
Yeah. Now, when you work that through, again, at the top, it's, um, it's the same process as what we did with the first batch, the first. Um. The main funds, which is gonna be part of the past. See that? Uh, we were trying to keep it a four percent tax levy increase. So it. We just kind of, just to drop the tax rates again because of the assessment change. Um, so that means the tax levy would be one point six million four point three.
We've done all, all of these, but since now you're doing this.
Yes.
Just wanna make sure.
Yeah, there's, there's no other expenses that this fund. Uh, cause Brookendale.
Yeah.
And we're not, so that's out.
So we've left Varna where, I mean, I know where it was and we put four point two percent on the other three.
Right, we dropped them to that.
Yeah.
They were, yeah, that was their request.
We're not updating anyone's requests, we're just. Dropping everyone. Who was. Already over four point two.
So, so and that will be the same four point two.
No, Aetna's gonna stay at their request of three seven, three point seven five.
They hadn't asked for more, we're dropping everybody, we're putting a ceiling at four point two. Aetna had already come in under that, so.
We'll give it to them.
We're doing this thing, we're gonna grow these budgets, but we're gonna grow them incrementally. Last year, I guess what made me uncomfortable was we did jumps, but, um, you know, we're based on certain equipment purchases, like a. A cheese vehicle for, for, you know, if you look what we did in twenty twenty three for, for Strong, you know, there was a big jump. You know, ninety thousand dollars. Some of it at least were, but. At, um, where we, you know, added, you know, some state people that we like to do extraction equipment. What we're doing this year is we're leaving it there and then just putting an incremental increase.
By the way, just a few thoughts on Varna specifically. They're taking on Brookendale's territory. Um. That's twenty nine thousand five sixty one on the data, like you say, in the fire tanks. I, I, I understand, it's not gonna cost Varna almost thirty grand to go to those twenty calls a year, but. In. My world, they ought to get something, we're taking that out.
Well, they're not, they're not getting the lowest budget, they gave us two budgets, so they're getting halfway between.
I, I, I guess I understand that, I guess what I'm. What I keep coming back to is you have one fire department. In town that is. Growing every year, doing a better job every year, and in fact, they're taking probably. Fifty, sixty, seventy percent of Aetna's calls, Aetna's not even going on. Varna's doing it, and they've never. Asked for anything more for doing.
Yeah.
Um. So, I, I, it all depends on what you wanna, what you wanna do here, but. It seems like you're rewarding, you're paying, giving everybody a raise when. Some people are working to get it and other people really aren't.
Well, I mean, I guess if you call. What we did last year was a big raise for some of the departments.
That's true.
This year, we're doing more, I would almost call this a maintenance, if we're just TPI plus point seven. Point eight. Again, what ones are looking at, that's, that's not a big raise, um. But.
And, and, and Aetna is now being either raised to that. To that, well, we're doing.
But to follow your logic, then we would reduce and, and increase Varna.
And Freeville, because Freeville's taking half their calls too.
Yeah, Freeville's taken a significant chunk.
Wasn't they sad at their thing?
They are.
Um.
I'm sure Vanna was sitting there listening to it, they probably disputed.
Well, that's, do you dispute that? Who's, who's, the. Strong said when they were here last week that they answer more calls than anybody.
That's true. Slightly. It goes like this, um, Jason, I sent you the numbers, um. Freeville is just slightly ahead of. Um, Dryden and Varna. And then Aetna trails way behind, and of those calls. They're, they're probably going on thirty percent of them. I mean, they don't, they don't take any of their service calls, their fire service calls Monday through Friday for ten hours a day. Varna covers, spend that way for years.
So the issue is though, is that as long as we're renewing our contract with them.
Sorry?
We're, if we're gonna assume we're renewing our contract with them. Then. We have to pay them to operate, correct? So, um. If we fund them to the point where they can't function, then. And it's on us that it's not functioning. But as long as we're choosing to renew the contract with them. We can't necessarily divvy that money up to other departments.
They have pretty hefty reserves. So they're not gonna be unable to pay their bills, I mean, that's. That's just not the case.
Wasn't this, the call number you put, you gave, is that, does that include, that doesn't include like EMS calls, does it?
Yes.
Yes.
So um.
Cause that's what Freeville was saying, they've been picking up so much of this stuff.
It's Dryden. On Monday, twenty first, says Dryden, three forty nine, Aetna one sixty four. Free, Freeville, three ninety nine, Varna, three thirty eight.
Right.
Yeah, I know.
Okay, with four point two.
I got it. Right, I actually dropped the timing, I leave this four ten. Takes me twenty minutes to get from the house and take to get down to drop it in all works. So I gotta get.
Child settling thing, okay, um.
Yeah, I didn't realize I didn't have school today, otherwise you would've been taking the bus, I found out yesterday, they don't, it's a good school district, didn't have school today.
Feature workshop thing?
I don't know, long weekend. But.
Oh. Overall. If we want to keep the tax levy at four percent and we have the contracts and the. I counted in here the workers' talent insurance and interest revenue. Um. We still, there's two thousand two forty six, that could be, that may be to main. Contract to keep, to balance the budget. And keep the tax rate at. Tax levy at a four percent increase. There is no other pay level.
Um, no.
Uh, for just the fire, just the fire, this is just this, this fund, the fire.
Okay.
It's two thousand. Two thousand dollars.
We keep it simple, I think we do. Do a cap. And those who didn't ask for that much, which was only one of them.
Yeah. Um.
But Chris raises this point, Varna didn't know at the time that we're. Canceling Brookendale.
They had a good idea.
You think that was built into their budget?
Jason told me, listen.
Okay.
Yeah, they, they weren't gonna ask for any extra money.
I mean, we could live on that two thousand for its fuel or something, if. That would make sense.
Does something.
And it keeps.
So would add that two thousand change at the Varda's? Yeah.
Fuel costs for the extended additional services.
So it would be.
There will be more, I know.
He said they're responding to most of those calls in that area anyway, because Brookendale hasn't been, so. And, I, I mean, it doesn't sound like it's really gonna change to their current operational expenditures.
Basic budget already over as they are. Okay, so we are giving them. Um. Over the, the, the minimum, the, the four fifteen that they were asking for, we are talking about.
Yeah.
Almost at two thousand.
So that would be a four nineteen forty six.
Okay, you're saying just keep it simple, at the cap?
So it will be four fourteen eight. Or eighteen?
Or nineteen.
I mean, if we were changing our contracts or not, contracting with any of the companies, that we have money to, to get dollars, but. As long as we're. Hiring them, I don't know how we justify. Not paying them for that year, you know, I mean. Oh, you know. I'm making no sense.
Yeah, well, we're not cutting Aetna.
Right.
From, from the discussion we've had so far, so we're, we're keeping at the bumped up level that we gave them last year. I mean, last year was a big increase for Aetna.
Yeah.
We do it secondly salaries.
Um, yeah.
Are we doing ambulances before we do the fire one?
Oh, yeah.
Uh, ambulance, pretty much, they asked. What the town was, um. Uh, intending, I guess is the word, and I sent back to them, they were looking at only a four and a half, I think. We're kind of like four, four and a half percent, I gave them a range. Uh, increase in tax levy, and that would be this amount, he basically brought his budget back with, okay, that's the amount. Um, so. Uh, it leaves a four and a half, in, four and a half percent increase to the tax levy. But it drops the tax rate again. So basically, they put their budget in as a number that. We said was the max, yeah, they could go off to.
Alright, and, and you pointed out, I thought you rather stated that they're running a pretty healthy surplus.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's, it's hard, at that time, it was hard for them to budget for the external revenues, I think they didn't know. That was the impression I got from Kevin, is they never totally know what their revenue is gonna be from private. So. Obviously, they have a higher one, um, so that is why. They had leftover funds that is leftover for operational or future building or any one of those lines.
We cut the four point two as well, but they're gonna be going to Brookendale too.
Right, but. Oh, they already have, but, but they're also going to other towns, it's one of the things Jason made very clear on, is they need to go to other towns. To get funding, so.
Yeah, they're doing it beyond mutual aid, this is probably.
Well, alright, I mean, we had a meeting about this this morning, and I was in the EMS subcommittee, and. There's no mechanism yet, more than to get money from other towns, but we're hoping to find one, but.
They also said they were gonna be able to start billing. Insurance companies, or no, they do, but there's gonna be a direct pay so that. There is likely to actually capture more of what they bill out for, which currently so much of that is lost. So, um. Yeah, it's direct pay from the insurance company, so that that was gonna help them this year.
Yeah.
Probably as well.
So I'm not gonna remember, when we said four point two for the fire companies, that was their contract, not levy increase. So that's the only thing, we just make sure we're talking personally to the right, um, same number.
Calm down, sorry.
No, it's fine, it's a valid point, I just, it, cause they all start to mix together, I wanted to talk about it for two hours, so, but I totally get it.
Right, we're trying to look at the costs. Inflation and then add a sweetener and cup of inflation.
Right, that was twenty three to twenty four.
We did, they, basically, the top rate stayed.
Actually, it stayed the same.
That was, we all had that big levy increase from the, um. Utilities. And that's, that was what possible, it wasn't all the property owners, it was one. Your own business, not, it's a change in twenty, twenty two to twenty three. But this year, it's appropriated, probably linked, uh.
Yeah.
Alright, so let's, we're getting back to dropping the guns, right? And, I mean, can you show me, like, where in their budget? Did you identify this to five hundred thousand?
Should be the last, second page, like, one of the last lines.
I see a seven thirty two.
So. In twenty twenty three, January to December. If you go down to net income. It's just five nineteen three twelve.
Right.
So that is the one I identified because twenty twenty three was finished, it's hard to do the twenty twenty four because obviously we're not finished yet. In their twenty three budget, they were projecting a deficit, and but they ended up with a. Five hundred and nineteen thousand more. Than they expected. It states primarily from revenue.
More calls.
That's what, where, where the increase came from, their, their expenses were free around, where they expected, some were higher, some were lower. Overall. There. Their actual, their administrative, no, it's just administration. They had two hundred thousand, less than two hundred thousand, um, hundred and fifty thousand less than expenses, but their revenue increased by, was.
But isn't it safe to say at this point in the year, they're running a. Income or surplus of seven hundred thirty two thousand?
I mean, as of, yes, as of the date of this report, which was at the end of August, yes, there's quite a surplus. Now, again, there could be some expenses still coming, any of your expenses, like every business and organization has, so. But they've already had. Um. Oh, the other thing is, is that twenty four, January to August, doesn't include our last quarterly payment, the town's last. Um, contract payment to them. Cause you see in January twenty, Jay, twenty twenty four through, uh. They've only received from the town one million one eighteen. But their budget is one million two twenty two, because they get four payments. Over here.
I guess my, my comment on this is it doesn't appear that they need a, an increased revenue stream from the town. I guess my, my comment on this is it doesn't appear that they need a, an increased revenue stream from the town. Other than to go into a reserve fund.
I don't think so.
When we really increase. Your revenue in two thousand nineteen, and we, I think we went up twenty percent.
Yeah.
Last year.
Do they have anything with their contract? These aren't their employees' contract now? Yes, but they budgeted that, the other key that they did not put in their budget is their interest income. You look at their twenty twenty-five budget. They did not account for interest income. Which in twenty twenty-four was already seventy thousand.
Hmm. There's additional revenue that isn't showing up here.
Yeah. So if you were to decrease, keep it, contract at the same amount as twenty twenty-four. You're decreasing it by. About sixty thousand. But it's possible that the interest should. Account, their interest income could. Offset that. Maybe not operationally, but it's still there if they need it. That's one of the things we probably should have asked them, why didn't they do their interesting?
I don't want to do anything to hurt them, I just am aware that we've really increased our tax rate. And the burden on our taxpayers in, in the, in the last four years, five years. And, um. I know that we need to have ample reserves for a new building. But I think they, they've got that, we're going to go after, as I mentioned, the CDS for them. Big grant. For a new building. And frankly, there's some things that are just fluid right now at the county. And interministerial level, in terms of. Dryden getting compensated for. Doing forty percent of their calls outside their CON, meaning the town, they've got a.
Yeah.
Certificate of Need for Tommy Dryden and forty percent of the calls for outside of it, something's going to change. It has to, in the next year.
So are they even the same? Fine, but.
What, if it was same. As last year, or?
It's a damn saying, yeah. Do you have comments?
Well, everything you said is, I, I, I think. Hoping that the municipalities are going to say.
It's not hope, I mean, something's going to happen.
Yes.
It may be an ambulance tax.
So.
Sure. Yeah.
Okay.
So we're going to put it back to last year on the.
Okay.
Pretty good chunk. Yeah.
That's fine. I'm good, because, yeah, they include their interesting. So what would be the. An interest income, even if you want it lower, so that could be at least sixty-two thousand.
Yeah.
That would make up for. The reduction part right there.
Okay.
Well, yeah, it's like, you know, you're interested.
And we expect them to change their.
They'll also put pressure on them to go, they're on everywhere else, in the meantime, and say. I want my two dollars.
What?
What movie? One movie, uh, One Crazy Summer?
Nope.
Nope, it's the ski woman.
Better off.
Better off.
Also, I'm sorry, I'm fine, I'm.
That's fine.
All right, Jason, five minutes late.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean.
Yeah. Quick, please, schedule it, I mean.
You're happy, I mean. We're really, maybe not playing.
All right.
We have to have it out to, uh, public notice no later than Tuesday morning, I mean.
Can we just have a Zoom executive session?
I don't know, can we?
What's that?
Why not? Yeah.
What was it?
Zoom is, this session, can we?
I wasn't there, like, uh, if it's a town board, well.
So we have to, yeah, we have to publish it in time for the seventh, but we have to have a public hearing on November seventh. Or, whatever the Thursday is, yes.
Right, we can see that, that's just not recorded.
Well, you know, you know, but you have to.
Still publish it.
Just tell them I can't come, they can't come.
All right.
Oh, Monday, Monday.
Yeah, we'll have to do it Monday, because I have different numbers by. Can I watch it over the weekend?
No, no, all right.
I mean, this is the, the meeting still has to be noticed. Right, and I have to bend out to the media.
Okay.
I have to, I have a, at the sewer plant, we have a budget meeting for this kind of same reason on Monday at nine o'clock. So.
But you're saying to get it out.
So it'll be done by eleven. So.
So Tuesday?
Well, I mean, Monday, anytime after eleven is fine.
I work until one. I can't get out before.
I, no, I could do four.
I could do four.
Well, not quite, they have to be five.
I could also do Tuesday.
I mean, we could do.
Well, I teach until four twenty.
Yeah. Would you do a Zoom then, for this meet, for that meeting, instead of having everybody come in, or we could do it? But it doesn't.
There needs to be, uh, a majority of board members.
Oh, in person.
And I don't think.
I don't mind.
The Zoomers can vote. Or.
Yeah, you can.
No, if it's Monday at five, I can be, I can be in person, I'll just come on my way.
Monday at five, would Tuesday work better?
We can't, we have to, we have to do that.
I have a meeting.
We have to do it, we have to have it out to the theaters by noon.
Yes.
Right, I just didn't know if Tu, people can meet earlier on a Tuesday, that was off.
And if, no, that's good, five o'clock on Monday?
Okay.
Yeah, I mean. That was not, who they morning could do it to.
Yeah.
We have the. The one we have to.
Yeah, actually, I have a ton of thirty, but I'm going to go over it. So money at five, yeah?
They're five.
All right. And Zoom, okay.
Well, one and two of us tonight.
I'll be there.
The meeting, who's, uh, first and second?
Yeah. Thank you.
First, yeah.
Back up.
Again.
Right.